Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM, Monday, November 29th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back after Thanksgiving. So, we were just talking about the pear tarts and the pumpkin pie and all kinds of stuff here. So, hopefully, everybody had a good couple of days. Item number one, Deschutes County Housing Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Greg Mund, Deschutes County Finance. Just give a, I'll give a quick intro here to this agenda item, then I'm going to turn it over to a couple of our colleagues in the region that have expertise in this area. But I just want to give you an update. Looking backwards to date, we've received at least six proposals for housing-related ARPA requests, and those total about $6 million in funding requests to date. The spectrum of these requests have varied from what we call affordable housing to workforce housing. So, in between that, and most of that, as you know, is defined by AMI, so AMI levels. There's a lot of information out there that I think was, might be confusing, especially with the different requests that are coming in. So, we've asked, or I've asked for a couple of folks, our experts in the region, Lynn McConnell from the city of Bend, and John Roberts from the city of Redmond, to give us an overview of the entire county as best they can in preparation for December 13th, when you'll have the opportunity to hear all of the proposals that have been submitted for ARPA funding. So, that's the plan for this agenda item today, and if there aren't any other questions, we can get started.
So, one thought is to come to terminology, just like you mentioned, workforce housing, affordable housing. So, as we step through this, this can be the educational opportunity for using the terminology, because just like you mentioned, there's a lot of asks and requests. Some are working through tax credits, or, you know, under, into area median income bracket or goal, and then why? You know, why is these, the brackets defined, and where are the lines? So, just a little bit of education today is my point.
Exactly.
Greg, could you repeat the total dollar amount for the requests in so far?
It's 5.8 million. Those are the, those are the items that have come in that are on the list right now. And there's, that's about, I think that's six projects.
Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any further questions, I'm going to turn this over to Lynn McConnell. There she is on the screen, and she has some slides that are being queued up right now that she'll share with the Commissioners.
So, hi, everyone can, hopefully, everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, thank you for allowing me to be in this virtual environment. I can't see anyone, so you all will have to make noise. If you need to stop me as I go, I hope that's okay.
Yep.
Um, so, sorry?
Yes, confirming, we can hear you, we got the, we got the message.
Thanks.
Chair de Bone, thank you.
There you go.
Commissioners, thanks so much for having me. So, I am Lynn McConnell. I am currently serving as Bend's Housing Director, and you all have seen this slide before. This is our lay of the land, and Chair de Bone, I was happy to have you mention, let's talk about terminology, because that's what we're looking at right now. So, in Bend, and in most cases, affordable housing is defined as a percentage of area median income, or things that can be affordable to folks making certain median income. So, here in Bend, right now, we're in Deschutes County, because these numbers are good for all of Deschutes County, 100% of area median income for a household of four is that sort of like greenish-yellow bar, kind of halfway down. And in this case, you can see a household of four can make up to about $80,000 and still qualify as median income. What that household can afford is then over on the right-hand side. So, we know that, according to the federal government, no one should be spending more than 30% of their gross income each month towards housing costs. So, that's how we got to those numbers on the right, rent and home price. I have a whole bunch of assumptions down at the bottom right of the page that you can look at if you'd like to pick my numbers apart a little bit, but this gives us a starting place. And do need to mention that these numbers for incomes are derived from the Oregon Employment Department, and these are median numbers as well. So, know that a teacher who's listed here making about $70,000, of course, no teachers start at that rate. They start in the 40s somewhere. So, for affordable housing, for rental product, people must be making no more than 60% of their area, of their area median income. And for ownership product, can make no more than 80% of the area median income. So, you get over to affordable rent or home price based on that. Before I proceed, please make some noise if you have any questions about this slide.
So, acknowledging this is a household income, and just, just as for a reference point, you know, I remember my wife and I got married, and we were both working, and we qualified for our first house, but that means both of us were working, so that was how you get to a household income at that point.
Got it. And it gets confusing. I mean, people who have extended families, you know, a lot of times don't realize that other members of their household are still counted towards this income calculation when we're trying to figure out what folks may qualify for. All right, let's go ahead and advance. Thank you. So, this is also very grounding to me in terms of what we're looking at in our market today. So, these are old numbers, but as you all know, in Deschutes County, things are outdated pretty much as soon as they're published, because our growth is so amazing. So, this is the most recent info we have. I will tell you, what you're looking at here is, the red bars are a deficit of units affordable to certain, certain income ranges, and the green are a surplus of units or homes affordable to other income ranges. So, because this is 2015 census data, all these vertical bars have moved a little to the right. That represents AMI numbers. So, what you're seeing is the deficit of 476 units. That would now be to the left of that 125% AMI bar. What we're seeing here, in short, is that we have a deficit of approximately 5,000 homes for people making 30% AMI or minimum wage right now in Bend, or in Deschutes County. And then, there's, of course, a surplus of units for the highest income ranges. Middle income, some people call this workforce housing, is what you're seeing in those smaller deficit of units, the little red bars towards the middle. So, I think this is helpful, because it really sort of grounds not only who you're hearing from and who they represent in this chart, but also just the severity of the need for folks making minimum wage, all of our service sector folks, et cetera. Okay, carry on, please. So, here's our problem statement. Our community is asking for something that the market is not able to build right now. The good news here is that this is actually a math problem. So, there is hope. We are going back to maybe junior high math class with this whole discussion today. Okay? So, there, these are the drivers of housing costs, and I'm not just talking about affordable housing here. This is, this is cost and affordability generally. I'm not going to read these to you unless you can't see them, in which case, I'm happy to read them. But I think it's important to name these, so that we know what is and is not within our control. Some of these drivers are way outside of anyone's control here in Deschutes County, and so it may or may not make sense to spend time really focused on those. However, the good news is that some of these are within our control, at least in part. And that, to me, is really where the magic lies and where the action, the potential for action is happening. Okay? So, this is where it gets fun. What we're looking at here is what we call the capital stack. And so, some of you, I'm starting at a very basic level here, but want to make sure that I'm not jumping ahead too much. So, it looks a little complex.
Is this the middle school math section here? Is this the middle school math part?
It is, and I will tell you that, I thank you very much, Chair de Bone. The challenge, number one, with housing that is affordable, is that people cannot build housing that is affordable to the median income here in central Oregon without subsidy. That is kind of the reality of our market right now, and those drivers that we looked at on the prior page are the reason for that. But the math is that you cannot build today for what somebody can pay at median income to live in it, or below that. So, that's where our math is. So, what we're looking at here is, on the left side, the nice three primary colors, that is what a typical market rate capital stack looks like. These are the financing sources that go into what we call penciling a deal, or having housing development happen, right? Your total cost is represented at that 100% bar. That bar changes depending on the size of the project and all the costs that go in. In a market rate transaction, conventional or permanent loan is that sort of dark red color at the bottom, and you can see that's making up about 70% of this transaction. And that's by bank financing. Anyone who goes out to build, or even to purchase their own home, traditionally, most people use some form of financing, and that's what's represented here on the left. The blue and yellow are other types of equity typically. That's either developer equity, that's a soft second loan, that's any number of investment that comes in. But what's important here is to recognize, there's really only three sources, which is pretty traditional for a market rate transaction, sometimes two sources. And, but a bank is not going to cover more than they can expect to recoup. We all know this from our home purchases as well. They're only going to cover what they can recoup, right? On the right, different story. This is, you know, a very simplified affordable housing capital stack. You can see same colors, the conventional loan in an affordable stack is only about 11% of the total amount needed to pencil that project. The reason for that is that the rents that come in to an affordable development are only a fraction of what the cost is to operate that thing. And so, a bank is not going to lend for more than what they can expect reasonably to cover. Affordable housing comes with covenants and deed restrictions and other things like that to ensure that it is affordable for a long period of time. That reduces the value to the bank, and so that also affects part of this. What's also important here is there's, you know, various funds listed here that are part of a traditional financing strategy for affordable housing. This is a simplified capital stack. I have seen transactions that have had 12 different financing sources as part of them, and because we all like to make up our own rules in government, many of those different financing sources have incompatible or challenging rules to get to mesh with one another. And so, there's a ton of work that happens behind the scenes, trying to make sure that everybody's happy, and that everybody's priority works, and that all the different financing is fitting together appropriately. So, the, excuse me. What the difference is on this right-hand side, between that 11% permanent financing and the 100% top of the, top of the stack, is what we call the gap. That is the part that cannot be covered by the market, that is still necessary to build a project out, that needs to be filled, and we call it filling the gap when we're financing transactions from the government, or gap financing generally. So, most of the forms, the different colors that you're seeing beyond the red, are different forms of financing that come traditionally state, federal, local, equity sources, or reductions in costs to represent that same thing. Um, hang on just a second, let me just make sure that I've gone through my notes. So, in order to make housing less expensive, we have a handful of different options. Thinking about the drivers that we talked about, we can push that stack down by applying pressure more or less from the top, so that the total cost of the development goes down, or we can fill in the gap with different subsidy types or reductions, cost reductions. And the dynamic is the same really for rental housing, for ownership housing, for any type of housing that's out there. The idea is, yeah, you've got to make a pencil, you've got to get all the financing together. But in order to make it more affordable, there's either subsidy coming from the outside, or we're reducing costs pretty significantly to get there.
So, can I request that-
Any questions? Yeah.
I want to go backwards one slide. You mentioned the why, I think, at the beginning, and you started talking about this. So, drivers of housing costs, so that's kind of the point in time where we're at now. And, yeah, the bullet points associated with it.
Correct. Yeah, so these are some of the main things that are really affecting our housing supply and affordability across the board. This is definitely not just for affordable. We know that we've lost a significant part of our labor market, our construction labor market, in the last recession. Some of you probably remember that. I think it was something like 50% of our construction industry moved out of the region or chose to pursue different types of employment because they could not find work. That market has not returned yet. Maybe it will, maybe it won't at this point. A lot of our subcontractors can't afford to live here, and so they're having a heck of a time recruiting folks to come and build the housing that we need, just like a lot of other industries are as well.
So, Carolyn?
I have a que, this is Commissioner Adair. I have a question for you. We've been asked by the Mosaic Project to help with the SDCs for a project that they're have underway in Bend, and that's for actually workforce housing, 80 to 120% of the AMI. And I'm wondering why, because this is workforce housing, why the city of Bend, you know, you just said, we're, we're short of workers, why that couldn't be helped at all by the city? That project?
Yeah, the city, great question, Commissioner Adair, thank you. And the city actually is doing a little bit around that middle, what we call middle income, or workforce housing as well. So, this PowerPoint that I'm giving you today is based on a PowerPoint, in part, that I gave to my council several months ago, when they indicated interest in helping as well. Absolutely. The same exact dynamics are true for that middle income range as are for affordable, and I want to make that very clear. Folks in that middle income range largely cannot afford housing here either. What's interesting about this, to me, is that that is absolute proof that we have a broken housing system in Deschutes County right now. You know, in an ideal world, in a normal functioning market, there would be no subsidy needed for that middle income sector. This is absolutely the type of housing that the market should be providing in a well-functioning system. However, we are so imbalanced here that, that folks can't build largely, and I'm saying, I'm making these bold statements about what people can and can't do, hoping like heck that somebody's out there listening who's ready to prove me wrong. I really hope that somebody's out there can make this happen without subsidy or without cost reductions from either the county or from one of our, the cities, et cetera. So far, that has not been true, but I'm so hopeful that, that somebody's out there just going to try to-
These people are-
-try to stick it to me.
This is what they are doing. They're working on 87 units, and it is for workforce housing, and apparently, that's what we're short on. But truly, across America, we're short on houses for the entire country. It's not just Deschutes County. The entire country quit building houses at the level which we needed, and so therefore, tremendous shortage. And when I backed into someone making $25 an hour, when you back that in, you can really truly only afford $1,000 a month in rent. So, even at $25 an hour, you know, where do you find a $1,000 rental here? You know, and that, that sounds like, you know, a decent wage. So, anyway, I'm just wondering if the city is going to change their workforce, because we truly need workforce housing.
That's right. You know, the other, thank you, Commissioner Adair, and the other thing to keep in mind is that really nearly every unit of affordable housing that exists in Deschutes County right now contains somebody who's working. So, for instance, Bethlehem Inn, you know, the shelter that we, our two jurisdictions helped to create and sort of incubate and launch, 75% of the residents of Bethlehem Inn are working. That unfortunately is our workforce housing right now, because we are so far behind. And so, it is vital, I'd say, to our community that we look at this in, in a comprehensive way, and how can we help ensure that the product that we are contributing to meets the needs of our community and is affordable for, affordable, I'm using the lowercase version of affordable here, for quite a while. So, with that, I'd like to keep moving through the slides, if that's okay, because there's a couple more things that I think might help take us to the next few steps. Okay, next slide from here. So, again, you know, when we were thinking about the drivers that are pushing on the cost of housing right now, these are some of the items, and these are only representative of some of the methods that we have within our control to help push back on those escalating costs. So, of the four categories, there's direct subsidy, we've already touched on that a little bit. There's reducing regulatory burden. City of Bend does that for things like expedited permitting for certain types of homes. We allow for density bonus. We look at, we're looking at for really across the market, both height increases in certain areas and parking reductions in certain areas. Those both help reduce some of the burden of getting housing built. We also have costs that are somewhat within our control. And then, this other category is really sort of my catch-all, that's, that's the fun one to think about, getting creative, maybe trying a little more risk, and trying something new and different that maybe we haven't done yet. So, the first three, direct subsidy, reducing regulatory burden, and reducing regulatory costs, are the ones that are easiest and most within our control. So, the ARPA requests that you all are considering right now fit into, for the most part, the direct subsidy component. And again, this is very much just a snapshot of a handful of items. I should have explained first off, the acronym that's in that first green box, Purchase and Rehab of Existing NOAA. NOAA is an acronym that stands for Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. It's a term of art. That really just means buildings that are out there that maybe don't cost as much right now, that could be purchased and converted to have long-term affordability. And so, typically, what would happen is, if the city of Bend puts some funding in, then we lock it down with some form of deed restriction, mess up the title to make sure that it's going to be affordable, whatever that affordability metric is, whatever makes sense to this commission for a certain period of time, so that you're sure that you're utilizing that public money in a way that benefits the most number of people. So, these are a handful of options for you to consider as you look at how to meet this need. Next slide, please. So, why are we talking about this, right? There's a lot of cost to housing, and you all may have seen this. I wanted to first commend you all for your contribution to permanent supportive housing. I know you have done a ton for some of the work that's happening around that realm right now. So, what you're looking at here is the cost of sticking somebody in the current systems that we primarily use to deal with folks who are out on the street or don't have stable housing versus the cost of permanent supportive housing, or what's listed as fuse housing in the second column here, kind of on the left-hand side. So, you all know, and again, that same calculation, for the most part, is considered on the right, because there are Oregon numbers on the right in the little orange box that's down there. So, we know that housing people, even the most expensive type of housing, which is this PSH housing, is still considerably less expensive than some of the other public systems that we're relying on right now, such as jail, or emergency rooms, et cetera. So, this was actually a big part of why City of Bend really started engaging in the work around homelessness, is the recognition that we love our police, our police are better used oftentimes for other things, not necessarily to help folks get into stable housing. There are people who do a better job of that than our police department does. Similarly, there are things that our social service providers can't do that the police have to. And so, just making sure that folks are utilizing their skill set in the right way in an attempt to try to maintain or reduce some of the costs of our policing, because I don't know what your budget is right now, but I do know that ours has been increasing pretty, pretty substantially on public safety generally over the years. With that, I want to leave you with two things that are my final slide, and that is, the full continuum of housing is absolutely vital, and I would encourage you all to look, not just at rental housing, also at ownership. I understand that shelter needs are being discussed in a different, a different time than right now. And second is, if it helps at all, something that may be helpful for you to know is sort of how Bend has lent money over time. Number one is that we almost can always lend money, and so if, if it makes sense for you to grant, that is fantastic. That really benefits, I'd say, what we're doing, as well as the providers as well, but totally up to you. And what we have done over time, really historically, is about $15,000 per door, per unit, is our contribution historically. That is extraordinarily low. I'm not saying you should stick to that amount, but, but might be helpful as you look at some of the requests, because there are some pretty significantly varying numbers in the requests that you have in front of you now, to, to help think about what's fair, or what's a good amount that is to earning the public money the best that you can. With that, I think that that's all I have for slides. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll stick around in case any come up throughout John's presentation as well.
Great information. Thank you so much.
Lynn, did you just say something about loaning money as well as granting money? Can you, can you explain how that works?
Yeah, so, City of Bend, because we have such limited funding for housing, these are all what I call enterprise funds, so my programs are completely self-sustaining. We don't use any general fund. They are all generated out of fees, and revolve, those fees revolve through. So, rather than expend our money completely each time, what we do is lend the funds, and these are all, of course, below market interest rates. We're not going to do what a bank is going to do. We, our goal is to fill the gap after the private market has already done what they can. So, we lend them out at very, very competitive, below-market interest rates, or for very extended periods of time. So, for instance, we do 40-year mortgages instead of 30 years, which really helps with the affordability, because that cost is spread out over a longer period of time. But that helps us in a couple of ways. One is that we have a little bit of control over affordability when we have loans in the, in the property, and so we sort of get a say, although we're pretty low on the priority list, because our money is, is a smaller amount of the total, we still get a say on affordability, and we're able to monitor compliance, make sure that folks are operating the way they should be, et cetera. And number two is that approximately a quarter to a third of the funds that we award each year are made up of recycled loan funds. So, those are loans that have money that's gone out once and come back in through the form of a loan repayment, so that we can recycle it out again. And so, that just really helps us boost the amount that we have every year. The developers don't love it, and so I wasn't really intending to try to convince you that loans are the way to go. I think, I think that's worked for Bend, but whether or not it works for you, it's entirely your decision. Grants are, are a lot easier for our development community to use.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing today.
Thank you.
Oh, good afternoon, Board of County Commissioners. Happy post-Thanksgiving.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
That's what's coming next, yep.
Um, yeah, by no means I did not prepare an extensive or lengthy presentation. We, too, the city, rely heavily on Lynn and her staff and the city's expertise. They have a lot more breadth and depth of experience than the city of Redmond in affordable housing, but we're a lot more aware than we ever have been about affordable housing, and starting to work a lot more harder in trying to get more units constructed. So, I think if there's any value in what I'm about ready to present, it's just to reiterate and give you an idea of just the backdrop in Redmond alone, you know, one community in the region in which affordable housing is truly a regional issue. Next slide? Or do I get to move the slides? Okay. And so, you know, the, the slide Lynn had of the house and the different median incomes, we also used that. We took that and presented that to our city council, but median cost of a home in Redmond is now 450,000. And as Lynn's slide showed, the median income to, 100% area median income for a family afford would purchase you a home of about 376,000. So, in Redmond alone, which grew at 9% last year, about 27% of Redmond's population is severely rent burden, which means they're paying 50% or more of their income on housing, and nearly 42% of Redmond's households are low to middle income, meaning they're making between 30 to 80% AMI. So, again, that just reiterates and gives you a good idea of the situation in Redmond, and how, how housing costs are affecting our population. Next slide. You know, we're, we've been doing a lot of work for our council, and trying to get them to understand the breadth of this issue, and also, we're taking to them more affordable housing tools that we need to pursue. And before we did that, though, we, we sort of did a literature review of all the affordable housing studies done in central Oregon over the last 12 to 14 years, and there was 11 different housing studies done, affordable housing studies done, and this table came from sort of combining those, all those studies together. Although this table is not perfect, it just illuminates, again, the breakdown of the housing, the types of- the breakdown of the housing, the types of housing units needed in Redmond alone to, to meet the different types of affordability. And these aren't, this table doesn't account for our accelerated growth, which surprised us the last two years. But, you know, we need to be building about 420 units a year to keep pace with our growth, of which just 150 of those units need to be between 30% and 80% AMI. And then, you know, this table's interesting, you know, 80 to 120% AMI workforce housing, about 39, 40 units a year need to be built. And by no means are we keeping pace with this. I mean, we're focused on a couple of projects and any project we're doing, we consider it, consider it a win. I think, not that it's ironic, but I think we all know, Redmond used to be a bit of a solution to the Bend's affordability issue. And that unfortunately is no longer the case. And all I can say is, you know, we as a staff, per our council's directive, are getting more and more serious and, and looking at ways we can help these different projects better leverage their resources, their funding. And any way we can come to the table with tools to do that, we're trying, we're trying to do so, so.
Couple of reference points for me. So you're saying 423 is kind of the production that you're on right now? Is that correct? Like this, this last 12 months?
Yeah, and you can see in that table, that 423 probably comes from an average of the last three years. But you can see how few of those units are actually 120% AMI.
Understood.
The real demand is, is below that.
Yep. But so, yeah, in Southern Deshute County, city of Lepine, you know, they kind of went from zero to 100 miles an hour, kind of in building houses also. So, but the number is about 180 and maybe 200 next year. So that's interesting to see that. You know, there's, there's a lot of houses being built in other parts also. And the affordability, same situation. You know, there was disgust, wouldn't it be great if these new houses going in this, you know, remote little town could be 250,000, 300,000, but they jumped to 354 right away? So it's just, it's just what happened in the market.
Yeah, and net delta continues to go, grow. And the numbers we showed you, it's a combination of both rental and ownership. So any type of unit you build is, has value, so.
Yeah.
So John, you were just saying that the average the last three years has been 423 units and that includes apartments and houses as considered family housing?
Yeah, again, that average includes multifamily, yes.
Okay, and multi, okay. So then the, you know, the 40 acres that we donated to Redmond, it's going to have, what, 485 units? That's still several years out, isn't it?
That's the target. Hopefully we get going on it sooner than a couple of years, but yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and just as a reminder, let's just round Skyline Village up to 500 units. The, the vision was half of those units be 80% AMI or less and perhaps the other half be 80 to 120% AMI. But again, details that will continue to flesh out.
So John, if you had a magic wand, how many houses or how many units would, should Redmond be building a year? Since, I mean, I realize that 9%, is that going to be sustained? That's pretty significant. And it doesn't include Eagle Crest, does it?
No, no, yeah, no, Eagle Crest is not in Redmond city limits. I, I don't know how the growth could sustain itself that we've seen the last two years. But when we look at our building division, we continue to plan for between 400 and 500 new year, units a year being built. If I had a magic wand of, let's say, those 400 a year being built, it'd be great to see 350 of those built at 120% AMI or less.
Thank you.
Is that it for your presentation?
Yes, that's all I got. For your time.
Very good, yeah, I wasn't sure. So thank you so much. It's really good to kind of see this big picture. Here are some of the terminology, you know, get right down to the AMI and the, the income levels also. Questions?
Yeah, if we, if there's time for some more questions. I would, I'd love to ask about the, the influence on our local housing market that people who, people who come to Deshute County with either, you know, very large savings from somewhere else or jobs, remote jobs with very high salaries have. I, I mean, a, a, a unit of housing costs a certain amount to build, no matter what. And then, demand for that housing will also affect what the, what the price is. And, you know, if people are coming into the region who have the ability to, to buy really expensive homes, it can also affect what, you know, what's being built in the first place. You know, if there are a whole lot of people who are able to buy a really large, expensive home, then the, the industry, the sector, may not be producing as much, you know, small, smaller or more affordable units. And, and so, can you, can you comment at all on, on what effects that has on our local housing market, having those, you know, just a lot of people who, who kind of are off the charts in terms of, in terms of AMI for, you know, people earning local wages?
Commissioner Chang, I wasn't sure if that was aimed at me or John or...
Both of you, either, either of you wants to answer that.
Okay. Yeah, we're absolutely seeing. I mean, that is without a doubt a component of the escalating prices that we've seen over the past couple of years. I think we were named a Zoom town by some magazine or other because of the wonderful life here, I'll say, in central Oregon. And the folks who relocated here were absolutely exerting upward pressure on the market. So we know that we cannot control that growth and the demand. That's not something that Oregon land use allows us to do. If folks meet the requirements for a building permit, then we issue a building permit, regardless of what the value of that house is going to be, once it's constructed. To me, what is most important then is ensuring that we have the mechanisms in place to give affordable housing and middle-income housing a fighting chance to compete in this market, because it really is a competition. There's limited contractors and they can make money building market rate housing right now. There's more work than they know what to do with in some cases or than, than the employees that they have to put to work on those jobs. We know that the land cost is going to be the same. Affordable housing, true affordable housing is actually given additional points when they're competing for financing at the state level for below-market land, which really puts central Oregon at a disadvantage because we don't have below-market land here, unless it's you all or us providing it. And so we need to make sure that to the best of our ability, we can, we can allow for folks to compete with the private market. Part of, some of the things that we do are things like expedite permitting. We allow for density bonus for the more affordable housing, for certain housing types that we really want to see, like middle housing. We've reduced SDCs and we've allowed for no density consideration just to make sure that, that they have a very clear path to be able to build. The other effect that we're seeing from this in-migration is that people who have higher incomes and really want to live in this area are sometimes willing to settle for housing that maybe isn't their first choice. And so they're taking some of the housing that would be great for some of our lower wage workers, middle-income workers, because they can and they can compete effectively for that housing. So again, you know, building more affordably to the best of our ability will really help relieve some of the pressure on the lower-income folks. But know that, you know, as John showed, from the housing needs analyses that have been done, there, there's a need for housing at every income level, without a doubt. The good news is, is the market is taking care of some of those higher income ranges, which really allows us to laser focus in on the middle income and on the affordable realm to make sure that, that we're giving the boost and support to those products that we can. I hope that helped.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Great. Any comment, John, real quick on that question?
Geez, Commissioner Chang, that's a tou, it's a tough question. It's a question without answer. I'll just throw something out there, food for thought. My planning background is in resort areas. And I think central Oregon loses sight of how cheap it is. I know that's not something people want to hear, but it will remain cheap and as such is, will continue to be attractive from the anecdotal stories we're hearing, whether it's the outmigration from California, the valley, Seattle. I can't tell you how many friends in Breckenridge want to cash out and move to this area because of the, the similar lifestyles. And so, again, it, my experience living in those types of environments is, it sort of bifurcates your community into the have and have-nots. And, and I think we're creeping in that direction faster than people realize. And again, it just stresses the importance of, yeah, supporting and being aggressive about any, any type of workforce affordable housing program you can.
Great information.
Yeah, I mean, what, what, the really important strand, I felt like, from what I just heard is that if we, if we just kind of, if, if we just focus on letting the market do its thing, it's very possible that the market might be producing some very high-end housing because there's market demand for it. And it, it, the, the market may not produce what we need a lot of, which is housing in the 80% or lower AMI. Which, you know, that's the justification in my mind for, you know, for subsidies or for, you know, land contributions or, or, you know, giving ARPA dollars or thinking about some of the kind of regulatory relief that, that Lynn mentioned, that, that the city of Bend is pursuing. So, so thank you. I, it's just helpful to kind of have that reconfirmed, that, you know, sometimes a little bit of market intervention might be needed to get the housing that we need for our region.
So John, I have a question. Would the city of Bend, apparently I'm, you know, I'd ask about the SDCs for workforce housing. What about the city of Redmond? Do they acknowledge those projects? And would the SDCs be reduced at all for a workforce housing project?
Yes and no. So we already do SDC buydowns for projects within our urban renewal area. And we're looking to expand that outside our urban renewal area. One thing we have been successful doing, instead of SDC buydowns, is property tax exemptions. And we'll be willing to continue to do those. But outside the urban renewal area, again, SDC buydowns are going to, they're not impossible, but they're going to be a little more tricky for us. We have one good idea on the table, we just have to continue to work on it. And it would be related to, it'd be, it'd be trying to take advantage of the construction excise tax passed by the state. And I think there could be a way to marriage that construction excise tax with some of our building permits that have no net increase in our building permits, but be able to begin to create a pool of money for additional SDC buydowns. So it's, it's possible, just going to take a lot of capacity and a lot of work to get there.
Is that something that perhaps may be done in the next year, do you think? Or is it something that we're going to have to work for five years on before we can be successful?
Could I meet you in the middle?
Sure.
Negotiating.
I, I mean, everything seems like, you know, I mean, we do need, we need the workforce housing today. How many businesses do you go to? How many of them are closed now for lunch? Are they not open for dinner? Are they short-staffed? You know, or they, they've had to close because they no longer have a workforce? And then we're losing so much, we're losing our small business base in, in some respect. And that's, you know, it's really, truly unfortunate.
And John, the, the measures you were just describing, SDC buydowns in urban renewal areas, property tax abatement, that's for the 80 to 120 workforce, quote unquote, workforce housing? Or is that for a more affordable housing type, type projects?
Yeah, our, our current SDC buydown in our urban renewal area is for 80% AMI or less, but we're looking to increase it to include up to 120% AMI. Again, just speaks to a lot of what Lynn was talking about was, you know, there's certain assurances you have to get with those units to make sure they'll remain affordable, such as deed restriction. And once those are in place, yeah, we'll be willing to deploy the money to them.
Thank you.
Okay, Nick?
Thank you. We had the question about the market intervention and the SDC buydowns in urban renewal. And it just prompted me to think that both cities have fairly new and recently adopted urban renewal districts. My question is, are you using your urban renewal districts more broadly than just SDC buydowns as market interventions to build this type of, that needed housing in the urban renewal districts? That's part number one. And if yes, do you see that accelerating within maybe the next five to seven years, given the demands and the needs that we have today?
I, I could try to answer that, Nick. The urban renewal district offers us, the city of Redmond, the most creativity and flexibility in, in giving out money in addition to the SDCs. We have Housing Opportunity Fund and, similar to Bend, some ability to loan interest at low rates. But today, we really only have one successful projects, and that's Housing Works Project Midtown Place, 47 units. But our urban renewal committee has formed a housing subcommittee. And they've been aggressive in identifying additional properties that we're going to try to landbank. So thus, we can begin to be more aggressive with everything you just mentioned, with developing sort of a package of incentives to get developers to, to build a range of affordable housing types. And we're optimistic that's, that's going to have a good return on investment.
And I think in Bend, really, our theme is if there is something we can do to promote affordable housing, we're going to do it. That's really how we're looking at it, is let's throw all the spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks, because we are at that point in the crisis. And so in terms of the market intervention, I'm glad you said it. The, the, by far, right now, I'd say that, that we collectively in the United States are intervening in the market through homeownership subsidy largely, like we all write off our mortgage interest. That absolutely is an intervention in the market that exists right now, that thankfully, thankfully exists for those of us who own homes. And the amount of subsidy or other sort of investment that we are making in other forms of housing is very limited compared to that. So there's already things that we as government, we collectively as government are doing that are intervening in the market as is. So I really see some of this affordable housing work as trying to sort of even out, if that makes sense, sort of bringing those two things together. Because the homeownership subsidies are very important for a, a large swath of our population. That's great. That's, that's a great motive to keep people in long-term homeownership and invested in their community. And this really helps sort of back that up so that we do have a full workforce and other, other folks who can, who can jump in and be part of our community as well. So Bend has, I think, three urban renewal areas right now. You all walked with us as we created the Central District recently. We have done one loan out of the Murphy Crossing District for the Wish Campo property that's down there right now. I think they had $750,000 out of that urban renewal, which really helped them put in a sewer pipe, among other things, that, that kept sort of that whole area becoming more functional. So far, we haven't done any, to my knowledge, on the north end. But central area, not only are we looking at TIF funding for affordable housing, I think it's around 20%, we're also looking at like infrastructure, which can benefit all housing. And we're doing, considering some tax exemptions that you all will hear more about in the near term. We're reducing parking, you know. If there's a tool that we have within our control, there's a pretty good chance it's getting evaluated at this point just because the crisis has hit that level. But, but it's worth considering just about everything. hit that level, that it's worth considering just about everything right now to make sure that we can, you know, hold back the tide to the best of our ability.
If I could ask one more question. So, we do, we talk about land supply, the state land use planning system, urban growth boundaries, frequently in reference to housing affordability. Can you, I don't know if it's possible to assign a percentage, but like, if we can substantially increase land supply, what proportion of the problem does that solve for us? Or like, you know, trying to get to affordability, you know, how much can that do for us and how much is other tools, other tools needed? And maybe proportion isn't the right thing to ask for, but, you know, can you kind of walk us through how significant of an arrow that is in the quiver?
I don't see John unmuting, so I think that that's, that's mine to attempt. I don't know. That's a really great question, Commissioner Chang. I can't give you any form of percentage, et cetera, without a doubt, it's a contributing factor to affordability being what it is. However, we're seeing the exact same situations happen in places with very different land use, such as Boise. Boise's had about as much of a price escalation over the last two years as we have, and they don't have urban growth boundaries in the same way. So, I don't think that that's the only issue. And here, you know, having worked in Central Oregon full-time for a bit over a decade, you know, I've seen a lot of different attempts to attack the system. Love it or hate it, it is what it is today. That's what we have. And so, I try really hard to get my council to work within the framework we have. If they want to attack it on the side, that's great, but unfortunately, that's not going to change by tomorrow, and the problem is continuing to escalate. So, what I would suggest is, without a doubt, it's a significant aspect, especially in a place that's growing as quickly as Central Oregon is. But there are other factors that we have within our control that we can work on in the near term while y'all continue or others continue to try to improve the land use system as it stands right now.
Okay, so maybe, sorry, go ahead, John.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, Commissioner Chang, very, very interesting question for sure. And, you know, Nick and I will attest that the statewide land use program is not going anywhere anytime soon. But just some thoughts on re-engineering the question. Yes, undoubtedly, GOAL 14 and the requirement for urban growth boundaries and all the complexities in expanding the urban growth boundaries have contributed to the price of housing. But you could go anywhere else in the country and see the same affordable, affordability issues with communities without urban growth boundaries. But really, what communities are going to have to do is they have leverage now because of the urban growth boundaries with two things. It has to force the question of more mindful redevelopment and looking at those opportunities to buy those NOAA-type properties and redevelop them. And also, cities control all the cards with annexation, and cities can mandate the affordability they want as part of any annexation agreement. And that's, that is the real tool when it comes to land availability and moving forward.
Well, good job, Commissioner Chang, kind of pulling that one out. That came across my mind a few times here today, because I always think of, is it, you know, a function of the elbow room to be able to go develop? You know, one of the scenarios I think of is, you know, the City of Bend, 2008, asked for a big UGB expansion, and it took 10 years and millions of dollars. And I always, I just, you know, I think that there's a kind of a stumble in that system just because it took too long, it took too much, so much money, because obviously, it needed to grow. But this is the land use system we have.
Yeah, and I was thinking maybe a less complicated way of getting at the same question would be, how important, so I'm thinking in particular for the City of Bend right now, like, how, what is the urgency around starting the next UGB expansion now, Lynn? Or soon? Is it, I mean, and that kind of is a, the urgency is sort of, in my mind, a measure of like how helpful it's going to be. So, I mean, is it, is it very urgent that we start that process now or soon? Or is it because there are so many other tools in play to address affordability, is it not as urgent?
Great question. And Commissioner Chang, I sort of wish you had asked my council this question.
Yep.
Because I'm not entirely sure how to answer it and channel them effectively. But I will say that we have begun on the planning work that is required. Before we can talk about whether the boundary moves or not, we have to do what's now called a housing capacity analysis, used to be a housing needs assessment, and our EOA, which is the comparable version of an employment analysis as well. So, those mechanisms have started in planning currently, and we, that's part of our council goals, is to get that work done, ideally this biennium, or at least started this biennium so that we know what we're working with by the time this biennium ends. Let's see. So, I think that there is, my sense is that this council feels the urgency as well and is really trying to look at what we're working with before they make any final decisions about whether we go out or not. In the meantime, UP is absolutely what they're looking at. How do we allow for folks to build what they want to build in our community? And how does the city get out of the way of that? If people have plans and are able to build in the central area, very tall buildings, you know, can we allow that to happen and just get out of their way, basically? Because that's going to provide housing in the right area. So, that's sort of how we're looking at it. I hope that that was honest enough and not also getting me into much trouble.
That's a question for the council.
And the housing capacity analysis and all that work is in motion already. Thank you.
Okay.
So, Commissioners, so I'm going to ask the question. Given all this context, and given that this is really the precursor to our ARPA discussion, in your opinions, what's the biggest bang for our ARPA buck as we consider allocating those resources to address this issue?
Oh, what an opportunity! So, yeah, we do, we will invest. There's a Board of Commissioners, and there's money to be spent here, invested, federal money coming through the county. So, yeah, what's the best bang for the buck?
And, and, a great, and a great opportunity for us. We would love your, we would love your recommendations or input.
Well, I think it's interesting that we were asked for 1.2 million to help with workforce housing in Bend for the SDCs. And hearing that, well, they're considering it, but it doesn't seem like as of this moment that they're actually doing that, you know, definitely, we need workforce housing. So, I would hope by having this conversation today that that might be a consideration by the city.
Let me, let me just circle back to that. Are you specifically asking why the weather or why the City of Bend's Affordable Housing Committee does not contribute to projects that are over 80% AMI?
It's, yes, it's 80 to 120%, but I mean, part of what Lynn was saying in her conversation was talking about workforce housing and how we are desperate for workforce housing. And so, receiving this request from that project, which is over the Mosaic project, they were asking us to pick up the whole tab for the 1.2 million of the SDCs. And so, it just seems like, oh, my gosh, I know Bend needs it, I know the county needs workforce housing, and 87 units seems rather significant, so that's why. Just was glad I had a conversation today with Christopher Jones.
And Commissioner Adair, I would agree with you. I think that the spectrum of need is there. And so, my personal opinion is that having some contribution really throughout that spectrum, both on the lower end, which we're not talking as much about today, kind of in the sheltering component, rental housing, vital. It costs less to build rental housing, but homeownership is also a vital part of the continuum as well. And so, you know, sometimes we think about homeownership as a higher income. It doesn't have to be. Habitat and CORE both do both affordable and middle income within that. I think the balance with middle-income housing, there is a challenge, is that a lot of these developers aren't used to undertaking deed restrictions in the same way that the affordable folks are, right? The affordable folks know that they're going to be judged and looked at and under compliance for many, many, many years. And so, that's kind of part of their business model. For the middle-income folks, that's sometimes a new thing. So, it does sometimes take a little more negotiation or a little more discussion. What's your comfort level with a 20-year deed restriction, for instance, so that we're sure that those dollars go, stretch as long as we can? So, there's some give and take there, but without a doubt, I would say, the more you can do to spread that funding across the most number of units that you can, really from zero AMI all the way up to 120, to me, makes a ton of sense. So, I'm really glad to hear how you seem to be looking at things and looking at the potential of investing in the full spectrum of the housing continuum.
Just to follow up, so the proposal that Commissioner Adair is talking about is by this group called Project Carrot, they're calling their project Mosaic, 87 units of workforce rental housing. And they did ask us for, you know, essentially funds to cover SDC costs, and they offered, you know, a 10-year restriction to maintain those units as, you know, in the 80, 80 to 100, you know, possible or affordable, lowercase a, affordable to the 80 to 120%. But I, for 10 years, so, and I was really having a hard time getting my head around, you know, how much is, how much is 10 years worth, right? It addresses an immediate need right now. We certainly have a need for units affordable within that range, 80 to 120%. Great locations, sounds like it's going to be a beautiful, cool building. But if they can only kind of commit to 10 years, I'm having a hard time thinking about how, you know, how you value that in terms of a potential subsidy or investment, as opposed to putting more money into fewer units that would be like permanently, permanently deed restricted, affordable or workforce, you know, kind of in the missing middle range. Do you have any suggestions on how to think about kind of that, the time aspect of that?
Ultimately, that's a policy decision, and we tend to spell those things out in our code or procedures in some way, shape, or form. You know, this, for instance, our SDC exemptions for affordable housing require a minimum of a 30-year deed restriction, and that's in our code. So, that's sort of how we look at it. I will tell you kind of two words of advice. The first is that I would never make a decision without looking at the pro forma. You want to see where that money's going and watching the flow of it. And, you know, what is the developer fee tends to not be an issue, honestly, with folks who are doing this work in the affordable and middle-income range. But you want to look at the numbers, and I would strongly encourage you to do so. And they should be able to produce a pro forma. I also received the same letter and have been working on this. So, City of Bend allocated some of our ARPA funds towards middle-income housing as well. And so, I still have to create the capacity to issue an RFP. That's how we give money out, is through competition. And so, we will be going through that, most likely with our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee reviewing those proposals and asking the hard questions. I would invite this commission, if you are so inclined, we have our first round of funding proposals for Affordable Housing Fund next week on Wednesday at 3:00. And the committee will be, there will be quick presentations from the applicants for our funding, and the committee gets in there and asks hard, hard questions. And so, I would love for you to attend or watch, if you can, and see the type of questions that they are asking and the level of detail that they get into, because they are absolutely taking it very seriously, their stewardship of the public funds, and making sure that they know exactly where those dollars are going, what they're going to be used for, and that they are absolutely necessary to tip that project into getting completed. So, please feel free, if you have the time, to do that before you have to do your own deliberations and just sort of get a sense of the questions that are being asked and what folks are asking for. That might be helpful. But again, sort of the second thing is, historically, City of Bend has given about 15,000 per door. That is very, very low, but it really does show sort of the leverage that we are able to use and how little public investment it sometimes takes to really make that project tip towards penciling. So, again, 15,000, not necessarily the right number, but if it gives you a ballpark for sort of what may or may not be feasible. For the Wish Campor project between TIF and our Affordable Housing Fund, I think we were close to 6,000 per unit. So, it definitely goes lower. There's been some that we've found far higher than that, too.
Thank you.
Great information. Thank you. Commissioner Adair, what's that number?
I'm just...
Well, 87 times 15.
Right.
Well, but the 15, the historical 15, those were typically for deed restricted, permanently deed restricted affordable housing. So, it's a little bit, it's a little apples and oranges.
Simple calculation.
That's a million and three if you do 15,000.
Yeah, there you go. That's just another scope of it, yeah.
Right. Well, I just thought it was interesting, because workforce housing, hear from everyone, we don't have it. And yes, we are working on Habitat, we're working on CORE, you know, there's a lot of wonderful projects that actually change people's lives and gives them that equity, which I think is incredibly important. But this was workforce housing, and it's something, I believe he said, they should actually have the SDC number the 1st of January. And, you know, looking at something that possibly could be done sooner rather than in five years would be wonderful, so. And they do have a bit of a track record here.
Okay, thank you very much. Good discussion today. Thank you for joining us. Thanks for prepping those slides. Anything else, Greg?
Thank you for joining us.
So, we're going to come back here soon and be talking about ARPA dollar distribution for housing.
Yeah, so we've, so I've asked for all of the proposers to get their responses either updated or revised, or just confirmation of what they've submitted already in the next day or two, and then those will be part of the staff report, which will be for the 15th.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'll get those out to you early if I can.
Greg, I do have a, I'm wondering, where does the project in Sun River fit into everything? Their fire station, a police force project that they're going to hopefully be asking for between $3 and $6 million. Where's, where does that one fit in?
Well, that is probably not ARPA-eligible.
It's not?
Probably not, yeah.
Okay.
Looked at so far, but it would be TRT-eligible. So, I think part of the consideration there was to, once they have the project proposal developed, we'd bring it back to the board sometime after the first of the year during the budget deliberations for your consideration.
Okay, great. As we all know, that Sun River has contributed over 50% to our TRT fund.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Item number two, consideration of a contract with parametrics for Terrebonne wastewater feasibility study. So, this is a phase two effort here.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
I'm down here.
Yeah, on the screen, exactly.
We see you.
For the record, Chris Dodi, Road Department Director. Board, you recently approved $300,000 in ARPA funding towards a Terrebonne wastewater feasibility project. That allocation of funding was for three kind of major bullet points. The first was to assist in formation of a sanitary district with the community there and the expense that goes into that. Second was to take that preferred design concept and move that to a 30% plan level, given the amount of near-term awareness we have to take advantage of what's happening in the Redmond Wetlands complex, potential for the ODOT project to impact, you know, some of the lines that could be installed sooner rather than later. The need was established to begin work on that design work. And then finally, consulting related to the pursuit of grant funds, knowing that behind all this comes an effort to chase dollars federally, statewide as well, to construct, you know, the... statewide as well, to construct, you know, the sewer system in Terrebonne. That's how these things are typically done. So before you, Board, is a contract with Parametrics, Inc., to initiate that work and keep this project moving forward. Parametrics was hired in the spring of last year to produce the feasibility study, kind of what we're calling Phase I. And so this contract is a continuation of that work. We've negotiated a $300,000 scope with them, and that scope is attached to the contract. This is a contract that is an extension of work that was previously studied or planned, that itself was awarded via a competitive, a formal competitive process. And so there are some things, hoops we have to jump through, given the uniqueness of that, to award this contract to Parametrics. Given the fact that this contract's in excess of $250,000, the Board must adopt written findings in order to comply with the county code, which references the Attorney General's Model Public Contract Rules. So that's the requirements to award a contract based on work that was previously studied to this firm. So, Board, within the staff report, there are two findings. The first is, the contract promotes efficient use of public funds and resources, which result in substantial savings to the county. This is a result of the fact that we've got a lot of forward momentum going with this company, the stakeholder group that they've put together, and the work that they've done already and continuation of that work. So there's efficiencies with regards to this company continuing to provide this next phase of service. Then finding two, the contracting process does not encourage favoritism or substantially diminish competition in award of the contract. So because they were awarded the original contract through a competitive, formal process, they were, you know, that addresses this aspect of that finding. They were previously awarded something competitively. So, Board, those are the two findings that we prepared, that are part of the motion that we have attached to the staff report, again, for the, really, the next phase of work in Terrebonne and building that sanitary district concept with community members, designing that work for the improvements that have been contemplated, and then finally chasing grant funds and preparing applications for construction funding via the grant programs that exist. You have any questions?
So real quick, for these findings, are these findings that are from the Model Public Contract Rules, or are these words that were just kind of deduced from our point of view?
These are the two findings that are specifically asked that the Board adopt within the...
But are there Model Public Contract Rules statements in there that we're selecting from, from the state? Or are we creating these words? These are...
Tracking the requirements from, from the model rules as incorporated into the county code. It's the findings you need to make. There weren't alternative ones necessarily, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, just kind of understanding the, and I support these findings. I mean, you know, there is momentum, there's going to be efficient use of resources at this time. And the original selection was formal. So that's a good ground to start on, obviously.
And Director Doughty, you're actually saying that this could go from $250,000 to $300,000 per the attachment?
Correct. Yeah, it's the range that they've quoted us based on what they feel the work required is for those specific elements. So, you know, we landed on the budget amount. It'll be time and materials, up to $300,000. Could be, could be less. A lot of that's dependent on the fact that there's so many unknowns, you know, the process of this nature, how smoothly the sanitary district could be formed, you know, resulting in lower legal fees, you know, and then chasing grant funds, of course. That's another process that, you know, could require more effort, could require less effort, depending on what the funding agencies have in store and the various programs and their comments on the application. So a lot of balls in the air, a lot of unspecificities that require that, a range of that nature.
And I noticed that you just moved the meeting to, what is it, December 15?
Correct, yeah. As per usual, I notified you only to have to change my mind moments later. But yes, December 15, there will be a community meeting in open house in Terrebonne to discuss, you know, the feasibility project, kind of what we've learned, what next steps need to happen in order for this project to move forward, if the community is interested in that.
And then, at this moment in time, I also want to acknowledge and thank Representative Bonham for giving the Deschutes County Commissioners a million dollars for the City of Terrebonne to use for our discretion. You know, if we do, if we use it for Smith Rock, the state has already allocated $5 million for that. But I don't know, there might be a little bit there that we need to spend. But, you know, the sewer project, the road project, you know, we have been given money through his ARPA funding for his personal funds. And I want to thank Representative Bonham. So, you know, really appreciate that moment, that money at this moment in time, because I know this is a huge ask for the community, and yet there is the huge need.
Correct. Yeah, one thing, as we've modeled this and discussed with the Board, it's going to take an extra amount of grant funding, other dollars to, you know, fund the capital to, you know, make this a feasible project for the community. So every little bit counts, for sure.
Chris, I wanted to ask about the scope of work in relation to the, yeah, well, to the potential cost and work to be done by the contractor. So, you know, task two is the sanitary district formation. And there, I mean, we are not certain yet that coming out the other end of this, there will be a critical mass of people in Terrebonne who want to form this sanitary district. So if, I mean, if we reach, you know, worst-case scenario, we reach a point where there's not people, there's not a critical mass to move forward, do we stop the project, whatever time and materials Parametrics has put in, that's what we pay them, and then, you know, we're not on the hook for the remainder of the scope of work?
Correct. We can, you know, alter the momentum of the project and pay them for time and materials at any point in time. I am happy to report that our last sewer advisory group meeting, I think we took a pretty big step forward in getting some leadership from within the community to show interest in being a part of that, of a sanitary district leadership. So I'm feeling, you know, much better about that.
Great.
And, you know, we'll certainly know more after the 15th, when we talk about this with the whole community.
Great. Thank you.
That's great to hear. This is the third time we've done a study. And, you know, but this one, we're going forward with. And isn't there something that says third time is always a charm?
I've heard that.
Yes. Anyway, and truly, the need is there.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of agreement number 2021-926 with Parametrics in the amount not to exceed $300,000 for Phase II services associated with the Terrebonne wastewater feasibility study, written, with written findings number one and two contained in the staff report.
Second.
Great. There's a motion and a second. And I'll acknowledge, this is a partnership with the community. It's a platted area, one of the historical areas of Deschutes County. And there's groundwater protection issues or, you know, disposal issues there. So, you know, it's very much a community conversation with anybody that lives or works in that area, or recreates also.
Yes. The million people that visit Smith Rock every year.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.
It's not really related to this specific contract, but I did just want to say, we're awarding a lot of work to Parametrics recently. I think they owe us, like, opening up a local office and, you know, a couple of jobs in the community.
Certainly do have a local office.
I've been to their local office.
Yeah.
They do have a local office?
They do.
Okay.
Isn't it just right down there by the, around by the water, down by Turk Park?
I forget where they're at now. Wouldn't surprise me.
Oh, that's where I was there.
Yep. These firms tend to bounce around a little bit. But they've been established for quite some time here locally with a field office. And certainly, the staff has been a part of central Oregon for prior Parametrics being established locally. Familiar faces, very familiar with our, with our county and the work that's done here.
Yeah, I can't remember which contract I was looking at. Maybe it was for the landfill siding. But it seemed like the team was, one of the teams for one of the Parametrics contracts I was looking at, looked like they were not local, like, not local staff. But good to know that there's, that there's some, are there, are there local team members working on this project?
Yes, exclusively.
Great. Good to know. Thanks.
At this time, other items?
We have number three, the notice about the Eagle Roofing. It got added. It was a late-agenda ad.
Is that today?
Yes, it got added to today.
Means they organized.
There it is. It's right there.
Oh, okay. Yep. So notice of intent to award a contract for Eagle Roofing. So, yeah. Lee, please explain this to us, because I don't have it either.
I don't, I don't have the material. Sorry.
Okay. I apologize. It was a late add, end of the week. But for the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director for the county. What we do have before you is a notice of intent to award contract to Eagle Roofing. It's for this building here, for the re-roof project. It was budgeted in our budget this year for the replacement. And I do have Josh Clausen with me today, our project coordinator. He's going to be heading up that project. And so we, it was a publicly advertised project. We had six firms respond. Two of those firms specific here to central Oregon and local. And the low-responsive firm was Eagle Roofing with a bid, combined bid of $293,000. And flipping through my paperwork here.
So that's this building?
Yes, $293,348. And so that is for removal and replacement of the single-ply roofing, repair of insulation, and then we're adding additional insulation to bring the project up to current energy code. So the, the letter will initiate a seven-day protest period, after which we can process the contract administratively. So, any questions?
So you said that this was scheduled for this year, preventive maintenance, regular routine?
Correct.
I remember we had our big snowstorm a couple of years ago, and you were up on a ladder looking at all the, all the rafters and joists and connections up there, too.
Yeah. And so, you know, with roofs, it pays to be proactive in replacing it. The roof has reached the end of its expected life. And we're dealing with a few leaks from time to time, but this will allow us to get ahead of that and not have multiple failures in multiple areas at the same time. One thing we've begun doing because of the construction climate is putting roofs out to bid in late fall, early winter, which is a timeframe we use this time. And then the contract isn't required to be completed until mid-June. And so what that has done is it's, one, we've gotten a broader response from contractors. And then also, it's, the contractors, we tend to get better pricing because they have some flexibility to fit around other projects. This is a large project. It's the largest roofing project we've done to date. And so we're looking forward to having another roof like new condition. So...
So I was, I mean, there was such a wide range of bids that it made me really nervous. And do all of them offer the same warranty, was my question. And I remember Dave just had a leak not too long ago in the legal end of our building. So apparently, we definitely need to get this done.
Yeah. Yes, they do. And so there's a contractor's workmanship warranty that will be for, I believe, two years, and then a 20-year manufacturer's warranty. And the manufacturer's warranty is the same across contractors. So that, we would have the same warranty no matter which contractor did the work.
Okay. And so the good news is they're banned local roofing. And I was just wondering, do you know how long they've been in business? I tried to pull it up and I couldn't find it.
So I, I don't know exactly. I do know that the first project that I worked on in central Oregon in 2004, Eagle Roofing was on the project.
Oh, good.
So they do have a great reputation here locally. They've done two or three other of our roofs recently, and those projects have gone very well. So they do have a great reputation locally.
Did they do the Courtney Building roof?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Well, I've seen that one. So, all right.
And they recently did the courthouse roof as part of the remodels. They had also adult prone probation building a few years ago, the jail. So they've, and other roofers have done work for us as well. But those are some of the work projects that Eagle Roofing has done.
Well, the courthouse roofing, roof project turned out great.
Yeah. And that was a challenging one with the location and access. So...
And the skylight?
Yes.
Well, I've got a, I mean, I don't know what it looks like up there. But, you know, you said this is the largest surface area roof?
Yes, it is. And our largest re-roof project to date. It's probably similar in size to the jail project, which was done a few years ago. So that would have been a similar project.
But this one might be, the geometry may be simpler. It's just a big rectangle.
Yes, exactly.
I thought we were going to, like, pop it up, like, another level.
Oh, yeah, the other floor, too, while we're at it.
For affordable condos.
But until such time that we do that, we want to keep the water out as long as we can.
I just wanted an event space up there.
Events, yeah.
Yeah, open event space under the, under the...
That's a common request.
Yeah.
If we'll be able to fulfill that.
I think, actually, we need childcare. We could have the...
On the roof.
With a big, tall fence around it, so they couldn't do anything bad. But definitely, the county could use more childcare.
But I don't think I specifically addressed your point about the variance in the pricing. We were concerned as well, when you see that kind of range. Josh did a good job of looking specifically into the quotes, making sure everything was covered. And we're confident that, that they have the work covered and that they'll be able to do a good job.
Thank you for addressing that, because it was a huge range.
Yes.
I was going to say, if commissioners, if you don't, if you'd like for us to print this off, we can, before you make a decision, or alternatively, if you just want to provide a little bit more detail on just the range, just so that it's fresh, unless you...
We were able to, there was a bonus copy here. We...
I have an extra copy.
Okay. Thank you. We have it posted online, but I guess, yeah, just given...
I think...
The holiday. Okay.
Yeah. No, I'm comfortable.
You're good. Okay. Thank you.
I'll move approval of document 2021-954, a notice of intent to award contract to Eagle Roofing for redoing the roof of 1,300 northwest wall.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, none? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I heard about this. I just didn't have it on the agenda.
Thank you, Lee, for the, your feedback on all my questions. I appreciate that.
Okay, so that was item 1, 2, 3. Is it other items at this time?
No, I think we're to four now.
Wait a minute. Okay. Sorry, I'm joking around. So I do have other item. So we had a couple of topics. The CPACE has been bouncing around. There's been expectation that it will show up on an agenda. And I'm just working on kind of our procedures as a board. So remember, earlier this year, we're like, okay, well, you know, if we want to do work on the CPACE, let's bring it back at some point. So I just think of, as the chair, I'm in a spot where I'm expecting, you know, one commissioner to say, okay, it's time to bring back CPACE. And we would do that at a public meeting. So I'm just thinking, that's how we'll put it on, you know, an agenda in the future. Because there was this expectation of December 6 or something in the media. And I'm like, I don't know anything about that. So I'm just comparing notes, making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, no, I don't know where a specific date came up, but...
Yeah, see, and it might have been from outside of us. That's exactly, that's kind of what I'm acknowledging. It's like, who put this expectation out there?
Somebody must have.
Yeah.
I coordinated with Eric Cropp, who's really been our point person watching this. So we were just suggesting that, at the staff level, that that be a date that you might consider, just given the interest by at least one commissioner and what we've had a lot of public interest. So we just suggested that as a tentative date, if the Board supports that.
Well, as I say, I'm just making sure, you know, this is a future meeting topic, if it's going to be a topic, I guess, is the key. So, I mean, do you have any thoughts?
I, I've been tracking this pretty closely, working with staff, trying to gather information. And meanwhile... and meanwhile, the advocates for the adoption of this policy have been building more and more support in the community over time, so I wasn't sure exactly when the ripe time would be to bring it back, but you know, I've certainly been, you know, I was talking with Tom on a regular basis about it before he retired, and I've spoken with Nick a few times about it in the last few months, so it was my understanding that that was kind of the process for bringing it back was to coordinate with the county administrator, who would check with the other Commissioners whether they were ready, but if your preference is that we do that during Board meetings, I'm happy to do that as well.
Well, yeah, so I mean, it's just to get clarity on it, you know, as I say, so there was a date that showed up, and then, you know, there's been some good coverage on this, and, yeah, I'm just kind of lost at it, you know, and I mean, I've been, I get phone calls on this pretty regularly and some, you know, interesting things, you know, I don't think it's a landed deal at all, you know, I mean, our staff has done some analysis, and, you know, there's other folks out there that, you know, there's different views of this, so.
Yeah, no.
If we bring a CPACE discussion to a Board meeting, it'll be an agenda item, and for information, to get facts, you know.
I don't think anyone ever put out the assumption that this was going to be agreed upon and supported by the Board, but what we do, you know, what I feel we do owe the people who came to us and made that presentation in the spring, is, yeah, is a circle back and another Board meeting item focused on the item.
Well, as I say, I'm just acknowledging, I mean, if that's the.
And I mean, yeah, but I mean, I also wanted to, A, I wanted to make sure that staff had enough time to gather information, and B, that.
Well, so, maybe that's a disconnect, I'm thinking, I mean, the analysis by staff was done quick and early, so I don't know that staff is the key to this.
I think staff is still learning new things about this on a, you know, and this is part of, you know, part of the tension with waiting till you're thoroughly prepared, I mean, at this point, you know, I'm hearing about, I'm hearing all about Clark County as, you know, the model place that has just done this in the, you know, in the last six months or so, and, you know, kind of the model that we could follow if we wanted to do this, much more so than following the example of Multnomah County, so, I mean, so I don't think, I mean, I think that it's quite possible we could keep doing work on this, you know, over time to gather more information, and, but, at some point, you kind of need to make a decision that you're going to move ahead, or make a choice of whether you're going to move ahead or not, and then, you know, commit the resources to do that, and so I do think that it's an appropriate time to do that now.
Well, and you know, maybe it's a, you know, put it off, well, you know, so I'm supportive of bringing it here for a public discussion, but also, I mean, if it's not time, then we say, okay, well, let's revisit this, you know, six months or a year later or something, because I just feel like it's kind of been simmering for a while, and I'm like, oh, I don't know where it's going.
And I mean, we have, so, you know, in the last couple of months, you know, not a long time ago, but in the last couple of months, you know, staff has formulated this option of, you know, A, we could do a local program and just move ahead, you know, pass an ordinance and move ahead, or B, you know, if we're, you know, supportive of the concept, we could join the state consortium that's working on this, on a, you know, slower fuse, longer timeline, but with, you know, substantially less leadership work on our part, on the county staff's part, you know, to make it happen, just sort of kind of go along for the ride with, you know, other counties that are interested in doing this on a slower timeframe, so I mean, there's those two options, or don't do it at all, and.
Well, that's what we could learn, I'm just trying, I'm talking about how, you know, getting it to an agenda, you know, what's, because as I say, I mean, it was almost, you know, beginning of this year or whatever, it's like, okay, well, CPACE is something we need to learn about, I think you were advocating to learn about it when we got started here, I said, okay, we'll bring it back at some point, so, you know, now I just worry that we're going to keep studying it and not bringing it back, is, you know.
Commissioners?
Oh, sure.
Just.
As I say, I'm just trying to get clear on what we're.
Sure, sure, just for the record, Eric Cropp, Deputy County Administrator, Steph has been working on just some basic background and information about CPACE, and plans on bringing it to the Board next Monday at the Board's work session in the afternoon, and really, the staff report just talks about what it is, there was a survey done of several jurisdictions throughout the United States, and then the staff report just kind of asks for Board direction, which may be, let's not do it, we would like to get more information, or let's try to put together something, you know, it's really the full range of options. I've been kind of serving as the point person, and also communicating with some local advocates, I told them that we were targeting the December 6 meeting, they asked if they could present testimony, and I really said, and they also asked, would the Board be making a decision? And I explained, you know, at this meeting, there's really not a question, I mean, there's really no proposal to the Board, other than, here's some basic information about CPACE, and here's some options, you know, there's not a draft, there will not be a draft ordinance coming to the Board, so I tried to explain to the advocates that it's really more of an informational meeting, staff will be asking for general Board direction, and I also explained to the advocates that it's not a public hearing, and if they want to speak on the matter, it's really up to the Chair whether or not they could speak at the public meeting. So staff plans on bringing a report next Monday, talks a little bit about the program, options, and what other communities have done, if that works for the Board.
And as I say, I'm trying just to make sure we understand what's going and how it got here, I know there's been some, you know, very coordinated advocacy efforts on this, you know, my.
And don't forget, there was an editorial in the Bulletin this weekend too, on it, so, I know the community's really out there on it, I mean, and they're letting us know, but, okay, why did Portland really not do much, okay, what's the difference in Clark County? That's, you know, I really will look forward to hearing your feedback on that, because, you know, it really, it didn't seem like much happened in Portland, and yet, you know, joining something with the state, I don't think is probably a good idea, if it's really something that would be beneficial to our community, I'd like to know that.
Eric, well, in your survey of other communities, did you, have you spoken to people from Clark County?
I called them last week, and I haven't heard back, so, the initial survey went out to several jurisdictions throughout the United States, and then Clark County is on our, I'm trying to get more information from them, but it seems like it's a pretty new program at Clark County, but I'll continue to try to get ahold of the staff person there.
And that was mentioned to me, so I went to their website, tried to connect with the Chair of the Clark County Commission, and I haven't heard back, but that was last Tuesday.
It was a holiday weekend, oh, we can ask Greg, because Greg used to work for Clark County.
Oh.
Maybe he has a friend that's still there, right?
Yeah.
Perhaps.
I'm guessing he probably has a connection to you, yeah.
Okay, so next Monday.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So then, another one is a request for a community benefits agreement, and this was a, you know, handed to me from a gentleman, you know, working for Leuna, Local 737, so it's a, it's another, just one, you know, it's something that's coming to us, it's something kind of, you know, not the core of what we do, but it's a policy possibility, so that's out there also, so, I haven't responded to it, you know, any thoughts on that?
I think it's very core to what we do, I think, you know.
Well, I'm referring to getting it on an agenda again, that's all I'm talking about today, is getting it out to the public meeting that we want to talk about this stuff.
Mm-hmm, I would support scheduling it as an agenda item for us to learn about this community benefit contracting process, and seeing if we're interested in pursuing it, there was, I think I mentioned, just last week or two weeks ago, or last week, that that was one of the sessions that I attended at the AOC conference, that I thought was, you know, very interesting and worth exploring.
So Commissioner Dare, have you heard about this at all, do you understand?
I believe I have, and I'd be willing to hear about it.
Yeah, okay, so as I say, this is our work session kind of concept, about, you know, what topics we can be bringing to us here, so then, you know, I'm not opposed to that, so we can bring it in, kind of look at what's going on here, as a request to take a look at the program, is what we're going to do at this point, so this kind of fits in that same category as CPACE, so, you know, let's do that, let's do a little bit of homework on what this is, so, okay.
A work session.
Yep, yeah, Monday afternoon, so, and then, you know, we've learned recently, you know, the state laws and COVID and everything with our technology, we're always going to be in a meeting like this, which is fine, but, you know, we used to kind of go into different modes upstairs and downstairs, always a public meeting, but, you know, not always audio and video recorded, so this is going to be our setting, unless we, you know, sit in a different room, but it's always going to be available, real-time, recorded audio and video, you know, so the guidance is we're not going to go back to a, you know, work session, which is just that little bit more informal, a little bit more butterfly kind of stuff, but, and that's why I'm trying to just kind of talk like that now, this is our time to compare notes and communicate amongst ourselves.
I really did think the work sessions were nice, when you think about it, really, and it was a great way to back and forth.
To get some, yeah, I mean, just the, you know, the feelings and the understanding a little bit deeper, a little bit more, well, comfortable setting, but yeah, just it is what it is.
So, okay.
And for the Commissioners, we can make it more informal, and we can be upstairs or in DeArmond, but we do need to allow for remote public participation, or at least access, listening.
Yeah.
So that is a decision the Board can still make, if you chose to move it out of this room to one of the other locations.
Because, yeah, sitting up in a day like this is a little different than sitting around a table, communicating, so.
Feels a lot warmer when we're at a table, yes.
So that's another idea, just to look at for the future, I mean, if COVID is going to allow us to, you know, get around the table a little more, I mean, yeah, as I say, it was just a different time without masks, and you just grab a cup of coffee and sit down at the table, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, being able to broadcast, you know, live stream or record and make that available to people later on, as long as we preserve that, I'm comfortable doing this in other settings, I do think it's a tremendous benefit that people can tune in and learn what we're learning, essentially, because, you know, during work sessions, we cover some very important, very interesting topics, and it's a, you know, that's a huge value to the community and to our constituents, that they can tune in and hear the same stuff. I guess, so, just to go back to these two work sessions on Monday.
Well, I'm not proposing Monday for the other one, I'm just acknowledging that there was a request out there, you think we'd be ready for a Monday?
No, I thought you said Monday, but.
Well, just the CPACE was kind of out of.
CPACE on Monday, and then the other later on.
Bring that around, yeah.
What is, what is your thought process on having people present, you know, other people present besides county staff?
For CPACE?
Yeah, or for the community benefit bidding process, for example, I mean, in that case, I think we could learn, there's a tremendous amount to learn from Lane County, you know, for CPACE, you know, I think there's actually, there would be some substantial benefit hearing from commercial property owners who are interested in using the financing mechanism.
Well, so, yeah, let's talk procedure then, so if we have CPACE, we're going to have it on the agenda, item number X is, we're talking about CPACE, we have a memo that kind of lays out the plan, and then do we make it a public hearing where people have three minutes to speak on the subject, or do we have just an open roundtable discussion, which is that same concept we just talked about, a work session around a table is a lot different than sitting at a front formal, you know, day like this, because, yeah, so then it's, you know, advocacy, you know, we proved that we brought ten people to the table to say yes on this topic, okay, was there more content in any of those, you know, so I mean, we could end up in a situation where, because I mean, I've been on the phone with Paula Latanza four or five times now, and she just like, whatever a question I ask, she wants to, you know, do her homework and answer it for me, the answer's never going to be, well, maybe that's a good question, and, you know, the policy side of it is, I don't know, the answer only has to be yes for some people.
According to the notes I just took from Eric, Eric said it wasn't a public hearing, our meeting on Monday, because we.
But he's asking, would we, he's asking us as other fellow Board members.
No, I don't think it should be a public hearing, we have been hearing from so many people, yes, Paula called me on Veterans Day, yes, I've talked to Paula a lot.
Well, I mean, hearing from Paula is one thing, hearing from, you know, the principal at Merite Hotels, or hearing from someone from Neil Kelly, or hearing from someone from Core, you know, people who are in, you know, in the commercial property industry about their interest in using this, you know, using this financing tool, I think that that is, it's different than hearing from, you know, Deschutes 350, for example, so, I'm just wondering, if those people want to provide input, or, you know, just engage with us on this, what is their opportunity to do that?
Well, I would hope that all those letters could be together in our packet, so that when we review everything before Monday, we actually have a refresher of, you know, the many letters that we have received.
So, yeah, not for Monday, let's not call it a public hearing, let's lay it out on Monday, if there's another follow-on meeting, or if there's a decision space, you need to do a public hearing afterwards, that'd be the way I'd proceed, so let's just learn what we want to learn, or learn we can learn, hear from staff, analysis, other jurisdictions, and then make that choice.
And hopefully Clark County will get back to us, so, that would be nice, because they were given, you know, said that they really were the star, the rock star of this program.
Yeah, so it'd be a follow-on after Monday for the next step.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, those are the two topics I had, just trying to get clear on how we would proceed, any other items? Seeing none?
I'm happy we're getting a new roof on our building, let's hope we don't have, well, let's hope we do have five feet of snow, we do need snow, so.
But sometimes people need to water their plants in their office, so that it's an automatic watering system.
Oh, no, mine have already died.
Oh, okay.
Darn it.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll go to.